To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We are going to call the roll first.
Trustee Spurling here, trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And trustee Marisack.
Yes.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. So we're going to jumble this up and go out of order just a little bit this evening, just to kind of get everybody sworn in by the judge while she's here. The first, we have swearing in, so public participation, swearing in newly elected officials. So this time, we'd like to invite Judge Parga up from King County and Doug Marisack?
Okay.
Yeah. Figure you out, rank them. If you guys want to come up to the middle here.
If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I."
Aye.
State your name.
Doug Marisack.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of trustee.
The duties of the office of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, I'd like to invite up Dan Guyer.
Good afternoon. Hi. Mr. Guyer, if you would please repeat after me, "I," state your name.
I, Dan Guyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of trustee.
The duties of the office of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, so we're going to let Dan take a seat, and then we do have one more. If there's no objection, I would like to move down to items for separate action. 6A, appointment of Thomas K. Betzinger to the village board to fill a vacancy through May 1st of 2021.
So moved.
Second, call roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yeah.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes.
All right, and that carries 5-0. Congratulations. All right, with that, I'd like to invite Tom Betzinger and the judge back up to get sworn in.
If you please raise your right hand, "I," state your name.
I, Tom Betzinger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of trustee.
The duties of the office of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, with that, we're going to take just a few-minute break here, and we'll re-adjourn in about 10 minutes. Thank you. And there's coffee and cookies upstairs. Thanks. We'll pick up where we left off at public participation, item B, public comments. Is there any member of the public that we should address the board? If you haven't signed in, if you can, before or after, and then just state your name so we know. Okay.
Good evening, village board. My name is Carol F. Spizito, 1850 Grandview Place in Montgomery. On Thursday, April 25th, at approximately 3:00 PM, a solicitor came to my door. She wore a Montgomery Village Solicitor's Permit. She also wore a badge that said "In Exelon Company." I later discovered the company was Constellation Energy Company. She waved a torn and tattered ComEd letter envelope at me and said, "You have not been responding to notices ComEd has been sending you." I said, "ComEd has not been sending me notices. Are you here to get me to buy electricity delivery from someone else?" She said, "So you want to continue to pay higher electricity prices?" I said, "You're misrepresenting yourself as a ComEd representative. I'm calling the police." She walked away. I went inside, got my phone, then went back outside to see where she was. She was visiting other units. I called the police. When she saw me on the phone, she walked to her car and drove away, leaving the property. After that, the problem toggled between Officer Fritz, Police Chief Philip Smith, and Deputy Village Clerk Debbie Buchanan. Finally, Ms. Buchanan informed me, currently, there are no specific procedures or guidelines as to when we can revoke a solicitor permit, so the board will be discussing guidelines as well as solicitor hours and other issues. In summary, solicitors bearing a Village of Montgomery Solicitor's Permit are not supposed to lie. That is manipulating people for financial gain. There are people who will sign up with Constellation, not realizing what they've signed up for, see their ComEd bill, get confused, call ComEd, get their delivery switched back. I am not one of those people, but I still want their deceptive practices stopped. Would the village board, 1. permanently revoke Constellation Solicitor's Permit, and 2. institute procedures for revoking a permit to circumvent the police village clerk situation through which I attempted to navigate. Thank you for your time and your consideration of my request. Do you have any questions? Then I will follow up with Ms. Buchanan later in the week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it. We are discussing this later tonight.
Correct.
Okay. All right, is there any other member of the public? All right, moving on, we have two proclamations. The first one, for Police Week, May 12th through 18th, 2019, and Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Awesome. And the second one is proclamation for Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes.
All right, both those carry. Thank you. The consent agenda, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of April 22nd, executive session minutes of April 22nd, the building report for April of 2019, water production report for April of 2019, accounts payable through May 9th for fiscal year 2019, and then accounts payable through May 9th for fiscal year 2020, appointment by the village president, Marion Bond, to plan commission to fill a vacancy through January of 2020, and the appointment of Marion Bond to zoning board of appeals for that same timeline, and a waiver of a temporary liquor license fee for beers, bands, and barns. And the last one is ordinance 1854 amending the village code, adopting a system of local adjudication for building code nuisance violations. That's second reading. We talked about it before.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Trustee Lee.
People, they just forget about you.
I know, they just pass me up. I'm the old guy here. Sit up.
All right, we'll move on. We already did item 6A for separate action. The second one, B, is recommendation of plan commission, a special use request for two outdoor cafes located adjacent to La Chiquita Food Market, and I'll ask Director Young for a summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have before you a recommendation from the plan commission to approve special use for two outdoor cafes, which will be located in a new 10-unit building adjacent to the La Chiquita Food Mart. La Chiquita is the applicant and owner of the property. They wish to develop this site that's 1.6 acres, Zone B2, and include a number of retail options for lease, including the two outdoor cafes. The overall square footage of the building for all 10 units will be 11,816 square feet, meets all zoning requirements in terms of setbacks, and plan commission recommends approval of this special use.
All right, any questions for staff?
Director Young, I'm looking through this area. Is it going to be right next to the existing building?
It will be, yes, between the existing building and Douglas. There will be a 22-foot-wide drive aisle in between or rear to the building, to the new building.
Okay.
Which is the side of the existing food mart. So the frontage will be towards the Douglas Road area. This spot is now just a grassed-over location. It's adjacent to some of their extended parking that is in that area. They have more than enough parking to accommodate both this new building and obviously their existing facility.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? So this is the recommendation of plan commission. The next item is the ordinance 1856 granting the special use. That's first reading. We won't vote on that, but is there a motion on the recommendation?
Motion to accept planning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0.
Youngerman.
Now carries 6-0.
Oh, I didn't even have to count to six in a while.
Item C is ordinance 1856 granting that special use. It's first reading. Is there any objection to putting that on consent at a future meeting?
No.
All right. Moving on to item D, we have recommendation of the zoning board of appeals for assigned variance to the zoning ordinance located at 8, sorry, 298 Montgomery Road. This is the Shell gas station. And go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a zoning board of appeals case where the applicant is Shell, located at Douglas and Montgomery Roads. The applicant wishes to place a 20-foot-high pole sign located directly at the corner, which would be located within the site triangle of the property. The approved location or signage type for this location would be an eight-foot-high maximum monument sign that would have to be located outside of the site triangle. Plan commission, the staff recommended denial of the variance. The plan commission at their meeting recommended that the applicant look instead to try to do some modification to their canopy or canopy signage in lieu of a 20-foot-high pole sign. So staff and the commission or the board of appeals recommends denial of the variance.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Correct. If he puts a 16-foot one up, is it okay?
No, he would have to be an eight-foot-high monument sign, maximum overall height, to meet the sign code.
And he'd be blocked in the traffic trying to turn.
Well, we still would not approve it, a permit within the site triangle. It would have to be in one of the two front yard areas of the, either the Douglas Road corridor or the Montgomery Road corridor. There's very limited space. I don't even know if that could be accomplished. So I think the alternative of looking at possible canopy sign would be in order. It's a very small site. The canopy's already very close to the right-ofways, so seems like a reasonable alternative to add to the overall signage package.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I remember even when I was on the plan commission, I think Teresa and I, we were talking about this. We were trying to eliminate, or when the sign ordinance came up, I think you and I went through it when we were on plan, where we were trying to reduce this type of sign.
And you did. The new regulations for a single user will not allow a pole sign. So, and that was not new regulations, it's a while back, but when you were on the commission, I believe that that was the recommendation to the village board.
Okay.
We've been pretty consistent over the last eight years in not granting variances for this type of sign just for that purpose. So there's nothing else? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept planning commission's recommendation for the denial of the zoning ordinance variation.
So this is to accept the plan commission recommendation. Okay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
So that carries 6-0, and just for the record, since there won't be an ordinance granting this, that's the pleasure of the board, is that we do not draft an ordinance to move forward with this. We effectively are denying this.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item E is a recommendation of plan commission of a text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding farm stand temporary uses.
Thank you. In the past, or by regulation, the only location that a farm stand could be located on a temporary use basis would be in the agricultural district. That does exist within our zoning ordinance, but we do not actually have any property in the village zoned agriculturally. So there's been a request to look at possibly allowing farm stands within the general retail areas of the village on a temporary use basis. So staff has proposed a text amendment to allow temporary uses, including farm stands, within business districts. The use would be regulated by a maximum number of days of 120 at any one time. That's not to say that there couldn't be an extension of that time with a user ended up coming in and requesting an extension of time or a second 120-day period. We felt that for harvest season, 120 days was adequate or appropriately met the needs of a farm stand. You might have some users that would fall into the fall with pumpkins and other items. So this would be a text amendment to the zoning district for all B-related zoning districts and would be handled administratively on a temporary use basis.
How closely does this mimic the mobile food vendor process? Would it be similar to that?
It's similar, but, similar but different. The amount of time would be, this would be more limiting in terms of the amount of time, and that technically, I believe, is a special use that would have to go through the procedure for a mobile food vendor.
Okay.
I think I have that right. Laura, do you recall?
I don't recall again.
But I think we've approved all of those. I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
My dad.
Okay. Any other questions for Rich?
Do we have, do we have someone who's specifically interested in doing this?
Yes, we have somebody that's interested in doing this in the Farm and Fleet parking lot.
Okay.
So there's plenty of room there. They have more than enough parking, even with Niners in place.
And Farm and Fleet is in agreement of that?
Farm and Fleet would have to be in agreement with it. We require that these cannot just be located anywhere. They would have to be located where a commercial venture is accepting of them using it on a temporary basis.
And would there be a designation of having enough space, then, where it's not crowding parking spaces and things?
That would be one of the criteria, so that we would not be taking up any of the required parking. It just so happens that Farm and Fleet has a vast amount of parking that they don't really need by code, so that's where it would be located.
And we're talking about individual farm stands, not a full-blown farmer's market?
Not a farmer's market, no. I'm talking about individual user, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anderson Farm would be entitled to that because...
Well, Anderson Farm is kind of a grandfathered use that was established many years ago for that track of property, so it's really not the same, even though it is a farm stand. It's a permanent farm stand instead of a temporary use on a commercial piece.
And what was the plan commission vote on this?
Plan commission, I'm sorry, the plan commission recommendation was to approve a temporary special use for a maximum of 120 days.
Okay.
As a text amendment.
All right. If there are no other questions, entertain a motion for item E, which is the recommendation of plan commission, to accept that.
So moved.
Okay. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0.
Thank you.
The next item is the ordinance, the enacting ordinance, 1857. This is first reading, so we're not voting tonight. Is there any objection to putting that on consent?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Item G this evening is Pzone Associates Basin stewardship contract extension. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you tonight is a one-year extension to Pzone Associates for the maintenance of the naturalized basins in the Village of Montgomery. Pzone Associates has performed this work for the naturalized basin since 2014. Pzone has worked with staff over the past few years to reduce costs and continue providing the same level of service that is required for the basins to remain healthy. Over that time, Pzone has maintained the basins. They have become efficient in their stewardship of these basins and have been able to reduce their costs. This year, Pzone has provided a reduced cost of $19,320 from last year's contract. Last year, the village elected to alternate years of prescribed burns of the basins, and this has proven to be effective as a cost savings as well. With Pzone's proven history of maintaining the village's naturalized basins, staff is recommending a one-year contract extension to Pzone Associates. However, staff is also recommending that this contract go out to bid for the fiscal year 2021. So this would just be for this year, and then we would revisit this moving forward. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Do we know how long we've been contracted with Pzone?
2014 is as far back as I'm aware of, but it could be more than that.
I think it's a lot farther back, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, we've had a very good longstanding relationship with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any other questions?
I have one question for Mark. The prescribed burn schedule, is that locked into alternating years, or isn't that really dictated by growth pattern?
That's something that we looked at. So one of the recommendations that Pzone themselves had was to look at reducing the prescribed burns. We were doing every year, which many communities or many other basins, they do actually every two years. So we elected, just as a cost savings, like I said, to go back to every other year. Last year was the first year we implemented that, and in talking with the representatives from Pzone, they saw, you know, positive regrowth from that.
But the contract would allow them, if, let's say, the growing season this year, you realize that that's really not totally effective, they could go back.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Call roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you. Moving on, item H is the Village Parkway Tree Survey. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you tonight is the contract for the Village Parkway Tree Survey. This survey is to be conducted to create a GIS platform for information of parkway trees within the Village of Montgomery. You may recall that a similar survey was conducted in 2013. However, the village was forced to remove over 2,400 parkway trees from that time to present day. The 2,400 trees were a result of the Emerald Ashbore that crippled many communities' parkway trees, and like the Village of Montgomery, many of those communities are still recovering from. This is one of the reasons the staff is recommending the new survey, the ability to track and update information when crews were working to remove the diseased trees were nearly impossible. Another main reason for the survey is increased technology in the GIS platform. The technology that was used in 2013 to conduct the survey did not provide conducive or was not conducive to timely updates and action that could occur in the field. I would also like to remind the village that the, or remind the board that the village will receive a grant from the Morton Arboretum once this work commences for $15,000. With the information, I'm sorry, with that information, staff is requesting a contract award for the Village Parkway Tree Contract to graph tree service for the cost of, not to exceed $34,000. I also note that this cost is less than the amount budgeted for this project in this fiscal year. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time.
Thank you. Questions?
Do you know how much we had budgeted for this?
The current budget is $40,000 for this fiscal year.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. Item I this evening is ordinance 1858, amending the village code regarding tobacco products. This is first reading. I'll ask our attorney for a summary.
Sure. This is a pretty straightforward ordinance. It's reflective of, recently, the state legislator has changed the state law for the age to purchase tobacco from 18 to 21, so this simply mirrors that. With regard to the village's ordinance, there's three major changes. One is raising the age from 18 to 21. Second is expanding the definition of tobacco product to include things such as electronic cigarettes and vaping, which is also included and regulated by the state law. So we're just trying to bring the village ordinance to match now what the state has said. And then I just would like to call everyone's attention to the fact that this is a delayed effective date, because the state law doesn't go into effect until July 1, 2019, so we would also match this, the village code enforcement to be July 1, 2019. With that, any questions?
What's the timeframe for businesses to have their signage updated?
That, I'm not sure. I would have to double-check for you.
What was?
But I believe it would probably mirror the same.
I just asked what the timeframe for businesses to have their signage updated reflecting the...
They would be expected to comply with the state law timeframe, so I would expect that the signage would have to be updated at the same time, but I can verify it for you.
And did I read this correctly, that you have to be 21 to sell the tobacco products as well?
Correct.
Wow.
And one question that I had, that now I'm blanking on, is, is it incumbent upon us to notify all of the tobacco sellers, yeah, that the law has changed? I'm assuming the state might do that, or?
I don't think it's incumbent on you. It wouldn't necessarily be a bad idea, just, you know, to reach out and make sure that everybody's aware and that they know that enforcement's going to change at the village level as well, but they should be aware, you know, that it's a state change, too.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance E.
Oh, gotcha. So this is first reading. Any objection or consent? Perfect. Thank you. Item J is ordinance 1855, authorizing a loan agreement. This is non-home rule entity, public water supply loan program. This is a waiver first and passage on the second, and I'll ask Attorney Julian for a summary. Is that you?
I was going to start off, and if there are any questions, Attorney Julian can answer those. The village is currently in the process of completing an application for an IAPA loan. One of the requirements is for the village to authorize entering into a loan agreement with the IPA. Estimated current cost is $1.85 million. However, the village has also received notice, the IAPA intends to forgive 100% of the loan, up to $1 million. In addition, the village has funds on hand from the 2017 bonds, which the intent is to use that money to immediately pay additional principal. And then the next item, Resolution 2019-006, authorizes both the village administrator and myself, the director of finance, to sign any necessary loan documents. If there are any questions, either myself or Attorney Julian can answer those.
Okay. And to take a slight step back, on this program, we went out and bonded for this project several years ago. Do you want to summarize the timeline between then and now?
Sure. We issued bonds in June of 2017. One of the items with those bonds was $500,000 for replacement of lead service lines. At the time, we estimated 50 lines at approximately $10,000 each, which is where the $500,000 came from. However, upon further review, there is now an estimated 105 homes that we will be doing the replacement on, and the cost of those has also went up due to asbestos concerns in some of the homes. in some of the homes.
But didn't we put the project on hold because we were going for the loan, the forgivable loan?
We learned that the rules were going to change for the loan program, that we could get up to $1 million in forgivable loan. Once we, once that was determined, then we scheduled to do it at a later time so that we could take advantage, full advantage of the grant, if you will.
Okay. Awesome.
It's the duration of the work to do the 105 lines, and is there a timeframe for that forgivable loan that the work needs to be completed in?
The timeframe is set by our contract documents. There's no specific requirement from the state to complete that work in a certain timeframe. We're anticipating that we would, we can't award the project until after July 1, because that's when the rule changes and allows the forgiveness. So we're hoping to start the project after July, probably August, and we'll work through the winter as best we can, but likely have a shutdown and then start again in spring. So we hope to conclude the project probably mid-next year is the goal. It just depends a little bit on contractor performance and other things.
Thank you.
How much do they figure each house?
Well, it varies from house to house, and one of the other complicating factors is that about 80 of the 105 are slab houses, so we have to directionally drill to the, oftentimes to the middle of the home and then come up through the floor to make the connection. So the costs are a little bit more than if you were going into a basement. And at each individual house, the cost varies depending on if it's a long or a short side, et cetera. So the exact numbers are not, we're not certain, but it's somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 per service.
What if that guy says, "I don't want you drilling a hole in the middle of my basement"?
So we've got, in the program, we've built in some incentives and some, what we think are pretty fair equities for people to be willing to do it. First of all, the work, it's likely there's going to be legislation in the future that's going to require the replacement of lead service lines. And if it happens after this project, that would fall upon the property owner to do the work on the private side. So from this, basically from the B-box or the property line to the house would be the responsibility of that homeowner. And we estimate that cost to be somewhere around $5,000 or $7,500, depending on, you know, the individual circumstances. So I think that's a pretty good incentive. We've also allowed a $1,300 allowance per home for repair of any damage that would take place in the home. So if, for example, you have to core through a floor and the tile that is in that room can't be matched because of its age, they would be able to use that money to hire a contractor and replace the flooring, and they would produce the receipts, and then they'd be reimbursed through the loan program. So that's another thing. And then as a further incentive and as an inconvenience fee, if you will, when they agree to the temporary construction easement, they get a $500 check for, to cover any inconvenience during the construction period, which may be one to two days, depending on circumstances. But if they refuse, then the village will skip that home, ultimately. But we're certainly encouraging people to cooperate because it's, in my opinion, it's going to be something that will be required eventually. There's been several pieces of legislation proposed already that are looking to require it, and so I think it's going to come to fruition at some point. The current Department of Public Health policy as well is that if you have a damage to your lead service line, they will not allow a partial lead service line replacement. So let's say that there's a leak in your service line, which we have from time to time. Once we determine that it is on the lead service line on the private side, we'd have to turn off their water until that lead service line was replaced. So we're trying to make a pretty significant effort to get as many people to cooperate. And right now, we've got pretty tremendous cooperation, and I think we only have about five or six that have not signed off. And some of them are, you know, the house just sold, so we're working through some logistics of timing. And then also, we've got a couple landlords that were just working the logistics of that. So our hope is that we are able to get 100% compliance or 100% participation in the program, but if not, you know, we'll just move on.
And we're going all the way to the meter.
We're going all the way to the meter, which is the only way we can do it. We can't, we have to go inside the house and make the connection into the meter.
And will we be changing the meters?
We will be changing the meters at the same time.
Okay. So it helps capture some of those.
Yeah, we want to make this, you know, it's an inconvenience, we want to do as much work as we can. It's appropriate. Most of the meters that, in the homes, are to the age where they're ready to be replaced, so it's an appropriate change.
Well, if you say the legislation is close, I'd have to rethink my ideas again, because a lot of the people in my neighborhood are all old lead pipes. But it isn't, and I've got insurance to cover if it blows from the house to the street. The only problem is every time somebody shuts my water off and starts screwing around out front, even if it's a neighbor's, blows my pipes inside the house, because it's so old.
Right.
And that's a house built in 1900. So I got a little bit of a problem there, because the water pressure is, just screws everything up. But I guess if you give me a little money to figure out if something goes, I can try to fix it or whatever, but it's really something to think about.
It's an undertaking, that's for sure. And the reality is, and Pete has been following the legislation down in Springfield for a couple of years now, and I know NWPA and Metro West have been following this, and the city of Aurora is helping, trying to negotiate the requirements, but the reality is, a homeowner has the right to say no, and if they do, it will be entirely on them to replace their service line in the future. And so we're trying to do everything we can to get everybody involved, and I hope that we will. That's my goal. But the other thing I should mention is to realize how ahead of the curve kind of we are on getting our loan application in several years ago, or last year, or whatever it was, because if all goes well, we'll be out of the lead service line business this year, and that new state law will not apply to us, while some of our neighbors have, I think, didn't you say Elgin has $33,000?
So, no, Elgin has about $11,000. City of Aurora has $24,000.
Wow.
So there's, it's a significant issue, and it's extremely, you know, expensive in the state. City of Chicago estimates that they have as many as 380,000 lead service lines. So it's a significant state issue, and I think it's, you know, the mayor was insisting on doing the project, and I think getting ahead of things was a good idea, because we did get the, you know, we're in line to get the funding, and there's going to be a lot of competition for it going forward.
Should Alderman from two different towns comment about our aggressive nature that we're taking on this and complimenting us? Granted, we don't have nearly the amount that they have.
Right.
But, you know, as far as somebody turning it down, it's lead. I mean, it's a lead service line. You're drinking the, you know, it's like the commercial. Well, this only has, this has an allowable amount of lead in it, you can drink this. You know, I can't imagine that there's going to be many people that say no.
Of course, people in my area talk about the chlorine, so I don't want to get involved in that, but, but some of my neighbors have had, and they've had to done it, and that's why I've got insurance from State Farm to make sure if mine goes, it's not going to be like my neighbor where they had to chuck out that kind of money. So you may not have 105, because some of them people redid theirs. And I know the old area has a lot of lead, there's no doubt.
And we verified, all right?
We've been inside all the homes to do an assessment, so, because we needed to take samples to determine if we had asbestos tile or anything like that, and also to document the location so that we could be able to properly bid it. Our goal is to identify and replace all the lead service lines in the village. If there's some out there that, and that's based on the best records that the Water Department had, if there's other places that have lead service lines that we're not aware, we'd certainly like to become aware of that, so we can include them in the program. And if needs be, we'll do a second program after our first program, but our intent is to do 100% of the lead service lines in the village.
Engineer Wallers, what, how is it houses that were built before a certain year that typically would have the lead service lines?
Yeah, it varied with, with timing and contractor. Some contractors had a preference for lead, using lead material. So it's somewhat, like, the predominant area that we have lead service lines is Marbury Manor area. That constitutes by far the majority. We have a few in the old part of town, but not that many, surprisingly. So it's somewhat dependent on, you know, contractor preference, or in the case of Chicago, for example, they had a requirement up until 1987 to use lead service line. So it was just a little bit unusual. So, anyway.
Right.
It wasn't approved material, you know, at the time. So it wasn't that, you know, there's any improper about it, it was just that, you know, it's now known to have issues. And I should say that it's not an immediate problem, because the village maintains a stable water chemistry, so that it doesn't remove the lead from the pipe. But over time, it's just best to remove the lead service lines. It's not an immediate problem, but it's just a precautionary thing to get them out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, this is item J. Want to entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And I carry six zero.
Thank you. Item K is Resolution 2019-006, Authorizing a Representative to Sign Loan Documents for the Lead Service Line Replacement Project that Justin referenced. If you don't have anything else to add, and there's no other questions?
So moved.
I'll entertain a motion?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call it a roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And I carry six zero. Thank you. Item L, this evening is Award of a Contract to Corrective Asphalt Materials for Asphalt Rejuvenation, an amount of $71,724.20. Acting Director of Public Works, Mark Wolf. For, dang it, I said the whole title, too.
Thank you, little President Raleigh. We are trying to, as you know, use as many methods to extend our pavement life once we've done our resurfacing. So what we're proposing this year is to use a asphalt rejuvenator to extend our pavement life from five to seven years. So we'll be paving all of the, we'll be coating all of the streets that we paved last year. The most effective time to do it is within the first year or two. So this we plan to do going forward, and we'll build it into the next pavement management plan as a constant. You may recall that we did Prior Cliff a few years ago as kind of a test, and we were part of a cooperative bidding that many other agencies bid on as well. But this year, because we had enough quantity, and speaking with the contractor, we had the order of magnitude to manage our own bid. So we went out for bids, we did get only one bid from corrective asphalt materials. It is under budget, and we are recommending approval to the low bidder.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question. So with the coating part of this, is this something that we would do a year later for each time we repave, or is it something that can be done in that same season?
It can't be done, well, it could be done in the same season, but we generally like to do it in the warmer months, and typically, or oftentimes, part of our roads are being paved in the fall, and we'd like to bring them in all at once. So what we've settled on is to do it the following year. So that's what we'll be planning on doing next year as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And I carry six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item for discussion this evening is the solicitor discussion. Did you want to kick this off, or?
No, I'm going to let it go right to the chief over wants to start.
All right. You want to shambal for it?
Sure. Okay, so we were asked as village attorney to revisit the solicitor ordinance, just to look and see if there were any things that could be strengthened, you know, in light of comments that we've been receiving from residents. By way of background, as everybody knows, this is something that we do review every, you know, few years or so to make sure that we're acting in accordance with state law within the parameters of the Constitution, but also doing what we can to keep in line with adjacent communities and make sure that we are regulating what we can regulate. With regard to solicitors particularly, it's primarily a First Amendment issue, so there's a lot of constitutional implications with how you can regulate speech, what type of speech you can regulate, and the courts have set some pretty broad parameters, you know, with regard, you can't have any, you know, too narrow of timeframe, so you can't say you can only solicit from, you know, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. It has to be reasonable to where people could come home from work. Typically, what's been found is in the realm of about 9:00 p.m. is reasonable, 8:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that's in line with most communities. But that's just an example. The courts are kind of all over the place when it comes to reviewing on a case-by-case basis. You might see one court that upholds something, but another court strikes down. So really, what we do is we use our best judgment into what the line of cases have said, and then, again, what surrounding communities have done that has been, you know, upheld and been found to be viable. So we've gone back through, and next meeting, what you'll see is a complete marked-up version of the village's current ordinance. Particularly, what has changed the most in our proposal is the permitting process, which just requires more information, a little bit more background, and then, as the resident this evening had stated, a more clear process for revoking permits for solicitors that have not been forthcoming either in their application or that have done something with regard to a resident that has asked them to leave and they have not done so. So, you know, there's limited things that the village can do, just because you are operating within a much larger framework, but we have tried to strengthen it in the ways that we believe, you know, kind of meet both goals of the village, the residents, the rights of people to speak and go door-to-door, but also letting residents have more choice. That said, really what the best alternative is, is for the homeowner to make clear that they don't want solicitors on the premises, because that's something that can be enforced, and that's something that can be reported to the police department as well. So we've got, again, additional language in the ordinance, you know, outlining what the residents can do, but really, the best start is for somebody to post a sign on their own property in addition to what the village code says. So that's a brief overview, and I think next time you'll probably have a lot more questions when you actually review what we've marked up and what the proposals would be, but I would be happy to take any comments or anything that perhaps on the top of your head that you would like to see or that you have questions about, you know, prior to bringing something before the board.
I have a couple, if I may. Recently, I think within the last week or so, there was a resident who had expressed her frustration with a solicitor. She was trying to get her groceries in the house, and the solicitor just wouldn't take no for an answer, and just kind of, you know, she's dealing, the resident is dealing with a child and trying to get groceries in the house, and quite, she finally just said, "You need to leave now." And there are residents, or there are solicitors, and I, we've talked about this at least a couple times, but there are solicitors that are trying to do their stuff, and I understand the freedom of speech, but at some point, it becomes a, okay, now you're trespassing type of issue. And then the other issue that I hear about from a lot of residents is the, how late that solicitors are allowed. And I think in our previous discussion, I had mentioned using dusk as a parameter to determine when that was, when, okay, no more soliciting, because we go through this process where they apply and we want to know who's in our subdivisions and stuff, but then it's dark, you know, and it's kind of disconcerting if you've got people walking around your driveway or walking up to your house in the, when it's dark out. And so I, that's the two issues that I hear. If we could do something about those, that would be outstanding. And, you know, when they knock on my door, because I get calls, I'm sure every other board member gets calls when they're solicitors, and so when they knock on my door, the first thing I ask them is, "Okay, what's your?" when they're solicitors. And so when they knock on my door, the first thing I ask them is, okay, what's your, where's your permit? If they have a permit, I say, "Hey, thank you. You've gone through the process." But if they don't have a permit, I tell them, "You can't continue." If I hear about it again, you know, because someone, if I, they go down three doors, it's gonna get back to me and I'm just saying, "They're gonna call the police and then you're gonna have to deal with the police." The police department's got better things to do. And so we, we gotta figure out a situation that gives them the opportunity to do what they feel that they want to do, but also gives residents the opportunity to say, "No, I don't want this. If you continue, there's some sort of ramification or something that's going to take place because you're now going above what we are, we're allowing you to do."
And, um, to your first point with the failure to leave, that is something that we have specifically fleshed out as a violation that could, um, stand for revoking somebody's permit, that if a resident does ask them to leave and they don't do so. Again, the key is always, you know, it comes down to enforcement, too. You can have all the regulations written down, but we also need to be able to enforce those, um, which oftentimes does come down to the PD that, uh, you know, has limited resources as well. But, uh, that is something that we've tried to explicitly address. With regard to the hours, as I had stated, the courts have kind of come down on a later hour than I think, um, most municipalities would like to see for the reasons that you stated. But I certainly will look and see if there's anything, um, that could tie it to daylight or something, um, you know, that would be more fluid, I guess, than just a strict hour at any time of year.
To build on what Trustee Youngerman was saying, when there is a problem, when a solicitor is not leaving, the people have to call the village or have to call the police. There can't be these posts on Facebook and then everyone jumps in and says, "Well, yeah, they were at my place, too." That's not good enough. They have to be calling the police or the village because they can't just assume that one of us is going to see it and then be able to share it. The other question I have, um, if we can just confirm for me, I believe the solicitor permit is $30, but the ticket is 25. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe you're correct. I believe the, uh...
Is this 30?
First of all, you have to understand, uh, and we're looking for quality of life here in the village.
Right.
And we understand when people get frustrated, like Ms. Esposito, I've, I've talked to her on the phone. At that time, you're talking about a pushy salesperson. And we all deal with pushy, pushy salespeople. It was not an illegal action she was doing. So Officer Fritz went out and addressed that situation. And, and I'm empathetic towards her cause. And yes, I wouldn't want to be woken up and told somebody that, you know, "I'm selling this and I don't want it" and the person doesn't leave. I get that. But what Attorney Julie and I were looking at is putting a little more teeth in the ordinance. So we can go out there and instead of just having a, a $30 registration fee or a $25 ticket, there, we could do more and actually revoke their license. Because right now, the police department has anything to do with revoking the license. Um, and that's why we were asking for some input, reestablish certain rules in that ordinance that we can enforce.
Okay. It, it just seems a little lopsided if, if that, right now, that seems to be our only, uh, source of repercussion for them is, okay, well, you can either pay $30 and register with the village or take your chances. And if you get caught, you might get a $25 ticket if they can find you. So I, I'd like to see the penalty bumped up as well.
So some sort of different fine structure associated?
Yes, yes.
Is it a $25 ticket per home? If they all wanted to, is it per home or per, you've done this all day?
No, it's usually per violation, but we're not gonna sit there and watch this person from house to house to house and stop them every time and write them a ticket. That would be absurd. We only give them one citation at that point and tell them to cease until they get the permit. If they don't, then we'll take other action.
All right. Oh, go ahead.
And as a board, as a board member, I have no issue at all giving the police department the authority to revoke someone's, um, solicitor permit. I, that, that's who should have the ability.
Well, I would really like that to, to, that authority to go to anybody else so they can worry about bigger ticket items. But I, I don't disagree with you. I, I'm sure one exists, but I've never talked to a resident that was excited to have a pushy salesman ring their doorbell. And so I know the courts are, and I rarely would say this, but I know the courts seem to be all over the place on this. But I think the public and the residents would absolutely support us ratcheting this down as tight as we can. Because it's, it, it is a freedom of speech, I know that, but it is also a nuisance in your home. And I hear, uh, firsthand comments, not Facebook posts, all the time from, uh, pushy salesmen that, you know, positioned themselves, wha-, as she was getting out of her car and she couldn't get into her house. I had one come to my house a few weeks ago and I was holding, you know, two dogs and kids back and could not get them to, uh, tell me exactly what it is that they were selling. They had a permit. But that's not, um, something that we should be supportive of in any way.
On the key to, I think what we're trying to focus on is we're not trying to limit in any way somebody's right to go door-to-door. It's more if they're violating something or if they're not acting, um, you know, if they're not being good neighbors or good citizens and not good stewards of, you know, their right to go door-to-door. Once they start violating, you know, once someone asks them to leave or, you know, if they're going outside the hours or they're not permitted, once they're violating something, um, that they otherwise have to do, that's, I think, when the enforcement element comes. But we're not trying on the front end, certainly, um, you know, to prevent anybody from being able to do so. It's just making sure that people, um, you know, the residents are respected to the fullest extent possible as well.
I have three, three questions or points. One is deceptive practices. Is there a way to work that into this ordinance? Because this example that she gave is not the first time I've heard that. You know, "Go get me your commed bill." They were asking somebody's teenage kid?
Yeah.
To get the commed bill. That's deceptive practice and it should be revocable.
A few years ago, um, Trustee Bond had brought up that issue and we did change the application to require both who the person is directly working for as well as anybody that they're representing to try to avoid that. And it's supposed to be on what they're carrying around. But again, it's something that we can certainly tighten.
And we, we give that to them on a lanyard, correct? I believe it's in with a little plastic sleeve.
I believe, so I'm not entirely sure.
Can that, that they have to have it displayed instead of, "It's in my car." Uh, that just...
I think it is supposed to be displayed currently.
And then my other question, so deceptive practices. If somebody comes to my door and I tell them to leave, get off of my property, I don't give a crap what you're selling or what you're talking about. You're trespassing. If I've asked you to leave my property and I own my home, is that not illegal? You can't just walk up to somebody's house and sit down on their lawn. Am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong. Technically, you're correct. But however, um, we have to look at totality of circumstances. You're talking a pushy salesperson. Um, I agree with you. I don't want anybody coming to my door. But how far do you want the police to take this? Um, if you want, we'll go up and if you're willing to sign a complaint, sure, we'll arrest them for trespassing. Um, we don't have an issue with that. But is that gonna solve the problem we have with the entire?
I don't, I, I want to proceed with everything we're doing.
Okay.
But I want to give residents right now, while we're in this process, the teeth to say, if they look at that salesperson and say, "I want you off of my property. You're trespassing." And if they choose to continue to be a pushy salesperson, I want you guys to be able to come and cuff them and take them away. It's done. They're trespassing at that point. I, I want to give the residents some recourse right now. If they say, "Get off of my property" and the people don't leave, I have a problem with that.
Well, I would say, "Can you call the police?" Yes.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, can we as a village look into what would it cost to provide no soliciting signs? Buy a thousand of them, put them up here at Village Hall, let people come and pick them up?
There's someone, there's a resident who's printing them out right now from people. Stickers, it's, they're two or three bucks and people, people are lining up for them.
You know, I, I just think to offer that as a service to our residents that have an issue with this, also give some teeth to the police. Because if I have no soliciting sign and you continue to knock on my door, I now have recourse to tell you, "You're not supposed to be here. Leave." I don't want to not change the ordinance. I do. I want to change it. I want to give residents as many opportunities right now to fix it. Because we're in the height of the season right now.
I've seen some good signs, like you say, they're only about two inches and they only just say no solici-, they don't take up, they aren't so gaudy on your house, but it says the message. Is this, uh, $30 an applicant? Is that per person or just for the company?
I'm not sure in practice how that's been enforced. I know, I think it's $30 per application, um...
See, that's the problem, like, like Teresa was talking about. What these guys do is get one permit. And I, I happen, and that's one thing I don't like about Kim Con, is by the time you get a policeman or even under, have them understand what the problem is, they're lost. But I, the old days when you called over, because I did it on one, a guy was walking up when I lived on Harmony. And he had the, he had his name of his company and badge number on it. And I said, "Where's your permit?" And he goes, "Um, this is it." And I go, "No, this is the company name. I want to know who's got the permit." And he goes, "Well, I'll, I'll, I'll have to talk to my boss about that." I reached over and grabbed his badge and took it. And then I said, "Now, get off my property." Well, I knew, here comes his boss in a car with four other guys and I'll pile out. He said, "You gotta give me that back." Well, meanwhile, I called the police station and Sullivan came and I said, "Get these guys out of town. Just take them to the, to this, to where the, the end of this Montgomery is and get them out of town. I don't care." I said, "Guys, falsifying all this? There's more than one guy?" And I'd ever seen a permit. I just seen his, and they were out of Addison. And they did this for a couple of years and then after that, they just didn't come around.
Yeah, and the application itself is certainly supposed to be filled out by the individual who's going door-to-door. Because it does have a line that specifically says individual name, home address, et cetera, and then a different section for the company that they're representing. Um, I guess my answer is I don't know if the village has charged individually per application or if they've in practice charged it per company. Um, but based on how the application form is, it certainly does require each individual to register. So that would be something else that we could enforce if that, you know, it's not a general commed permit. Um, hypothetically, it would be per the individual as the representative of said company.
And I think the police chief is somewhat right that it is a police problem. And I don't want to have it when they're in a problem with a car accident or something and they're calling on this. But this could escalate. I've seen members escalate like I have in some cases where you could end up with just more than somebody talking to somebody. But why can't, in the middle of the day, why couldn't they call Clupar and say, "Here, you gave the permit. You go find this guy." He's supposed to know exactly where the guy's going, pretty much. And Clupar could go and tell him, "You violated the permit and that's it," as well as the police department. I think that's a thing for the daytime. But believe me, at night, when a guy's knocking on your door and you don't know who it is and he has no permit, that's really when the police should come and say, "You out of town."
I have a question. What's the cost to run the background check? We run a background check, I think, right?
Yes, we already pay for subscriptions at different agencies to do background checks. So it's really only costing us manpower. Um, the form that our village attorney has set up in the registration process, is gonna be, it's not extensive, but it's a good background check. We can find out certain things. We're just not gonna fingerprint people, but we will put them through the existing background, background procedures now. Uh, what we're looking for is, I believe, our current ordinance says you have to be convicted of a felony. Well, there are certain things that we're looking for in misdemeanor range, like deceptive practice. If a person has a deceptive practice, uh, conviction previously and it was downgraded to, um, a misdemeanor charge, um, we'd like to know that and we'd like to be able to deny them a permit based on that. Well, right now, our current ordinance doesn't allow for that. So with the new wording and the, uh, the amendment to our ordinance, hopefully there's more teeth in it so we'll be able to do things like that and force certain provisions of those.
How much time for a background check?
It all depends on how many Debbie sends over. She sends over 10 at a time, it's gonna take a day or two. If it's just one, it could be done within an hour.
Well, I'm trying to find out, is, is the $30 fee enough? If it's costing us, you know, PD staff time to do this background check, is it, is $30 enough?
Well, with, with the type of businesses you've got coming in and soliciting, th- they're, they're here to make money, right? You know, $30 is nothing to them. It's not worth your time to go out if you're not gonna make more than $30. Why don't we increase it to like 300? Why don't we?
Yeah, and that's where you're gonna get into a sticky issue of, you know, of essentially preventing somebody from being able to speak, um, you know, preemptively. So I can tell you right now that the courts, a nominal fee that would actually cover actual costs will be, um, you know, upheld as reasonable, but anything beyond what actual costs would be probably would not.
And that's where I'm at.
But then on the other end, the fine structure would be the place where, what, somebody's violated something that you would want to then look at perhaps enforcing as a deterrent from doing things that they shouldn't otherwise do.
Well, we have Debbie doing her end and then we have the PD doing their end. And then we've got officers going and chasing these people around. So are we?
150 bucks.
You know?
Well, I think, I think it's a worthy question that, uh, hopefully staff can look at while we have the ordinance open, uh, to see if that fee needs to be adjusted and can be justified.
If there's a ticket, $25 doesn't cut it. Make it, make it hurt.
That's what I was saying. It makes, to me, that doesn't make sense because I can go pay 30 bucks and apply for the permit or I can take my chances and maybe I'll get hit with $25.
Yeah, and certainly that's probably where it would be easier, um, you know, to add the extra money if somebody does violate something.
Right.
That ticket, $300. There you go.
I think, I think $50 is, is, uh, you know, close to that. And you gotta remember, he's got six people running around out there. You catch one and charge them 50 bucks, the other five are gonna get lost somewhere. But I just want this lady's letter here answered. You know, as far as do you permanently revoke the permit by what she, by what she, uh, occurred with her? I think you should.
I would say yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would say so, too. I think she's, she may have to go farther and say, "I'm gonna take the guy." And I'll be glad to ta-, I've told guys, "You get off my lawn. I'm out here for trespassing and, and don't worry. We have a great police department and they'll be here in two seconds." But you just gotta...
The, the other part of that, though, the other part of that, though, is if someone wants to, if I want to charge someone with trespassing on my property, I can have the police come out and arrest them for trespassing. But then I have to go to court and show up and do these things. Now, a lot of people may not want to go that far and show up in court and go through that whole process.
Well, that guy might have to, but maybe if you don't want to follow up, fine. Uh, but I follow up and I'm used to that. When I had my store, I had a lot of trespass or theft and I showed up all the time.
Yeah.
And then the word gets out, too, so...
I, I think we'd have to exercise a little bit of caution when we start talking about permanently revoking, um, vendor permits, solicitor permits. This is a constitutionally protected activity. And if you have a one knucklehead employee who's being kind of a pushy salesman, I'm not sure that should jeopardize the, the permanent future impact that potential business could have in our community. Solicitors, in some respects, provide service to our community as opportunities. It's part of being in a business-friendly environment. They're a pain in the butt sometimes. I, I'm struggle a little bit with people getting up in arms over the solicitors. If you have a no solicitor sign, they knock on your door and you close the door, they tend to go away because they're not getting any business from you. So I just, I don't understand people getting spun out on these guys. I haven't had that issue. They've knocked on my door, I open the door, I see where they are, I talk to them or I shut the door. Either way, they leave. So, you know, um, I just, I just think as, as the ordinance has looked at the, um, revocation of a permit and then the reaplication, maybe it's a three-strike rule or something. But just because there's one vendor who has an issue with one employee shouldn't necessarily mean that that business can't operate in our community. I think we gotta be really cautious on that.
Yeah, I think that that's a very good point. And then, um, you know, also the revocation would probably have to be to the individual employee, not to the company as a whole unless something, you know, there was a very large, grand-scale issue with a particular company.
That's why I asked on the permit, if it's a individual for the $30 or the whole deal, you know? And, uh, for that reason, I mean, yeah, you can get rid of the one guy and I don't care if the next guy's nice. But you gotta get rid of that guy because I agree with the lady. I don't want that.
And I haven't seen one in a while. Um, do we get the information for their supervisor?
It's supposed to be on there, yes.
Okay, so that if there's a, if Lauren is not doing a good job, I can call somebody else.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be the person who's actually going door-to-door as well as the direct person that they report to, um, and all the company general information as well.
Good. Can, can we make them wear high-vis vests? Simply... Simply because, okay, they're, they're walking in the community. We do it under the pretense of safety because you're walking the streets of the community. And put them in high-vis vests, that way they're... in high-vis vests, that way they're, you know that, okay, now they've gone through the permit process, they have that information.
What, do you want to nose and blink or something?
Your antlers during hunting season?
I think this is, this has been a healthy conversation. We'll actually have a red line of the ordinance next time. If you have additional thoughts or comments that are serious, please pass those along to our attorney.
John, don't put that last part in the paper, please.
All right, if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and move on. Anything you were unfinished to come before the board? Any member?
I have two. I want to thank Trustee Youngerman and staff for all the work they did on the Bryan Lane flooding thing, because after this last Noah's Ark adventure that we've had, I drove past multiple times, and I saw a little bit of standing water once in that area. So I know that it's not, and I'm not going to wood, I don't want to cause them to have a problem, but we had some pretty significant rain, and it looked like what we have done to circumvent that drainage problem has, at least in this event, worked. Not that there couldn't be more problems later with an extensive rain, but I just want to commend staff and Engineer Wallers for all their work, and Steve for staying on top of it so much, so much for those folks.
I've talked to a couple of residents that live on Bryan. I checked in with them. No water issues, so...
So it worked. Thank you. And then, the other one I wanted to just ask for, because I've talked already with Engineer Wallers and Acting Director of Public Works, Mark Wolfe, regarding the Orchard and Galeno traffic light, and I just want to provide a public update for what that is, because I get a lot of phone calls about that one.
Sure. So the Concord and Orchard signal's been awarded, obviously. We've had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor. They've been delayed because of the wet weather, so they haven't started in earnest. We do have a status meeting tomorrow on site to get an updated schedule from the contractor to determine what work he's going to do when. Once I have that, I can give a more formal update back to the board, so you have a little more. We've also been advised that the mast arms delivery is delayed, and we're waiting a letter from the manufacturer to determine the amount of the delay. But that's been fairly common in the industry for certain parts of the signals to be delayed and due to limited production and flooding out in Iowa and other, there's been a lot of different issues. But, so we will be behind schedule, but I don't believe it'll be the contractor's fault, it'll be a supplier's fault, so we'll have to work through that, so... And the intent is, what I understand, is the contractor's going to put everything in place so that when the mast arms are, he'll put the foundations in, he'll do the concrete work, the sidewalk work, the wiring, the control panels, and have everything ready so that when the mast arms are delivered, he can move quickly to finish the project.
Great, thank you. And then, just to mark your calendar, I passed out to the board and press, we have the Sunday in the Park, June 23rd, which I know it's a little bit off, but we have free ice cream sponsored by Engineering Enterprises, and then we have Cap'n Funk and the Groove Train Band, and we have the Taco Grill, Grumpy Gaucho's, and we have an ice cream truck that'll be there later. Taco Grill is the vendor that's in front of Menards, is going to be there, and Grumpy Gaucho's from here on the corner are both going to be at that event on the 23rd from 4:00 to 7:30. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I had a question for Mark. I noticed we had problems, or these guys said they had problems over Lakewood Creek School, and Aurora's putting by all their elementary schools now this sign right in the middle of the road, and it's got state law right to the pedestrians or something, but it's yellow, and really, I notice everybody slows down when they turn. I mean, you got to watch it when you turn or you knock it over. But I, I'd like to have you look at the price of those and just, it's your work, it might work out there.
Lakewood Creek School had those?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the last two years, and till they got run over. The school, actually, I believe, I don't think we, as a village, did it, but the school had those. I think they may have been purchased through the Home and School Parent Organization, may have donated some funds for that, but those were purchased and were put out there. But, yeah, they eventually...
Yeah, there's too much traffic, you're going to get them.
Because somebody's got to put them out and take them in every...
No, they leave, they leave theirs 24 hours a day out there.
That's what happened. Is it nine o'clock at night? Steve drove by and ran it over.
And I want to thank Doug's daughter for baking the cookies tonight, Sammy. She had some very good cookies she baked for us, and usually rely on poor Penny to bring it, but Doug's daughters get to be a very good cook.
Thank you.
All right, before I give you too much time, future meetings, the committee, the whole meeting, we will have next Tuesday, divisioning workshop, and the next village board meeting is Tuesday, May 28th, so note that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.